Yes?
I'll call to order the November 27th regular business meeting of City Council.
You know, Terry, Mr.?
Oh, you're totally good. You usually read it so fast, I was going on cue.
Well, I'm trying to be slow tonight. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance tonight their sign up sheets for public hearing or citizens' comment period in the back of the room. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda is our motion to adopt as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries for row. Item three is, do any members have anything they wish to present before we get started?
I would...
Mr. Freeman?
Remind everyone that next Monday is the 4th, which will be the first Monday of the month, so I'll have my regular meeting session if anybody has any questions that would like clarification on some of the things that we've done or talked about, feel free to come to Panera Bread at 8:00 in the morning and/or at the library at 7:00 Monday night, and we'll be happy as all.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Item four is to hold a public hearing to receive comments and consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 28, Section 5 of the Code of the City of Waynesboro for service fees for use of emergency medical service vehicles. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen, members of council, you may recall that at your October 11th meeting, Mr. Gary Kreiser, the Director of Emergency Management for the City of Waynesboro, presented this information recommending certain amendments to the city code that would expand authorizations to bill for various EMS services delivered to constituents in our community. I think it's important to note and remind the council and inform the community more generally that perhaps didn't hear that original presentation, this is not a rate increase, but rather the staff is recommending to council amendments that allow the first aid crew, through its billing entity, to bill alternative insurances such as homeowners or auto insurance, thereby expanding the capacity of the first aid crew to realize revenue for services delivered to citizens in the community that presently they go, they deliver without being reimbursed for. Secondly, we make recommendation for amendments to the ordinance that authorize a collections process that includes an ability to pay consideration for the insured and uninsured for that matter, and finally, the ability to bill for certain services such as standby services, patient refusals, and treat and releases in certain circumstances. So this evening, the council is asked to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance authorizing these recommended amendments to the code.
Any questions of Mr. Hamp? If not, I hereby open the public hearing.
Ms. Charlotte Baden-ship or Baden-Hup?
Baden-Hup.
Baden-Hup.
If you'll state your name and address, please. We have a timer here, if you'll watch that light while it's on, widescreen, you can talk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
When it gets to yellow, start to slow up if you're not done, and when it's red, please finish.
Okay, thank you. 652 North Winchester Avenue. My name's Charlotte Baden-Hup. I'm just concerned about the pay for services not rendered. If you're called, 90% of vehicle motor vehicle accidents, 911 is called regardless of those injuries or not injuries. Therefore, if you get to the scene, people may not be injured, and they're going to refuse care. I worked 911 for three years. I know that motor vehicle accidents automatically fire EMS is dispatched out there regardless of the injuries, not knowing. People rarely, you know, we don't know if they're injured or not, but when you get there, if they're not injured, you just sign a release and say you're fine, or they refuse services. But how do you charge for services not rendered? It's kind of ridiculous. I was just in a motor vehicle accident myself. Vehicle ran me. I was trapped in my vehicle. A police officer got me out. Ambulance came. All they did was come up to me and ask me, "Are you okay?" And I did not want to be transferred because I didn't want to be billed. I took myself to the hospital. I don't want that bill. People do not, if you're in a motor vehicle accident, or if a family member is just too sick and you don't know. I also did emergency service as a trauma tech for 10 years. I would rather go out to the house and make sure and give that family a peace of mind. Your mom's okay. Your dad's okay. They don't need to go to the hospital. I'm not out there to charge them. I think it's ridiculous to be charged for something. It's a public service. See, I volunteered my services. I don't want to do it. I quit because of this. I quit because I'm not going to have my, people I go and help be billed just for peace of mind. I just think it's ridiculous at all. I mean, we have public services. In and doubt, call 911. I think we're squashing that. People don't want to be billed. They're afraid of it. They're living paycheck to paycheck to paycheck. I'm a homeowner. I have health insurance, but yet I refuse care. I'll take myself. I don't need an ambulance bill. I have bills I have to pay myself. So I'm just saying, I think we need to seriously think about this because some loved ones are going to be seriously hurt and not know because they're going to go without food or medication. I work at UVA. My people, my patients are telling me, "I'm afraid to call the ambulance. I don't want to be charged." I didn't know if I should call the ambulance because I don't think I was sick enough. They don't know, they don't have that medical experience. Let them come out, let them check you out, and then do it. If you're worried about money, keep your squads and the ambulances in the bays. I see it every Saturday morning, they're running around the roads, maybe they're going out to breakfast. We did it. We went to breakfast. We went and got gas. We went and washed the vehicle, and then we went and chit-chatted.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a waste of money. Keep your vehicles in the bays if you're worried about the money. So I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else sign up?
No, sir.
Okay. If I have a question for Mr. Kreiser, is it more proper to bring him up now or bring him up after we close the public hearing?
Either way is fine, sir.
Mr. Kreiser? Just so I can refresh my memory from the last meeting and presentation that you gave us, if at a call like that where there's an accident and they automatically respond, but there's no injuries, is there bills sent out to the people at the scene of the accident and the vehicle?
That's not proposed in this. What's proposed in this is the ability to bill for treat and release, the ability to bill alternative insurances if they don't have healthcare insurance, and to, we've obviously already been billing for transports for the last 12 years. So those are the two dramatic changes, and it is alternative insurances and primarily treat and release. You come to the scene, and again, I think we used the diabetic person the last time, and they give them medication and make them better, and they decide they don't want to go, and they get charged for that service. Those are the big differences in the ordinance.
And in our practice in the past, when people are indigent and not able to pay, we've...
That ability, that they can, there's a form that comes out after health insurance has been billed, if there's any copayer deductible, and in that it says, if you have the inability to pay, you fill out this form and you send it back, and it's written off.
All right. Anybody else have any questions of Mr. Kreiser?
So where it says patient refusals, that doesn't, what she was talking about, that's not what it refers to?
No, they would not. Because if, the way we do it in Virginia is that if you're, if we come to a car accident where you're, you've been a victim of an accident, and we walk up and you say, "I'm not injured. I don't need any help," we're not even required to get a signature in Virginia. You're not a patient at that point. You really don't need a refusal unless there's a patient provider relationship. That hasn't been established at that point. That's not a requirement. So this would only be if medical treatment was given, medications or other treatments, and then you refused.
Any other questions of Mr. Kreiser?
So we, when we have the situation like the lady spoke of, this would actually only help those kind of people that have a problem because if they can't pay, they can't pay. But if you do treat and use some supplies, maybe another, like audio, like you said, audio insurance, or homeowner or something that does have an ability, would allow our department to get reimbursed, so to speak, for the supplies used.
And that's the whole purpose, is that there are folks out there that don't have healthcare insurance.
Right.
But they do have auto insurance, and there's medical coverage on that auto insurance that would provide that reimbursement.
This actually would help those kind of situations that we spoke of.
The primary means here is to collect what insurance will pay. It's not looking to take money out of people's pockets.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreiser.
Thank you.
That's all. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir.
All right, I hereby close the public hearing. Is there any additional questions from members of council?
Is there a reason why that wording is even in there, then? If it's not really referring to billing people who refuse service?
If there's an assessment done, it's per the Virginia code.
Okay.
It allows, if there's treatment and assessment and medical, like, supplies or services used from the vehicle, and then they refuse, like, to go to the hospital, or they refuse further treatment.
Okay.
There is a limited, you can charge for actual treatment and assessments done, but not just if you go up to somebody and say, you know, "Are you okay?" And, "No, I'm fine. I don't..." That's, you know, like Gary said, that's not yet a patient.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This ordinance and all the rest tonight will be considered at the December 11th regular business meeting. Item five is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating $40,000 from the Stormwater Fund for the purchase of a new pickup truck. Mr. Hamp?
So to follow up on our conversation from the previous council meeting, the state contract is for a new vehicle. It's a 3/4 ton crew cab. The base quote and base vehicle in the contract is actually a short bed and is offered at a base price of $28,995. Our staff, the fleet managers and the various individuals, or the leader of the Stormwater Division, have identified about $10,000 worth of options, the bulk of which are constituted by a long bed. They prefer a long bed for the transport of materials and tools, and which increases the state contract price for the vehicle we've identified to $39,132. Following the meeting, the last council meeting, I asked the fleet manager to survey the market for equivalent or near equivalent used vehicles, and he was able to identify a 2015 2500 heavy duty truck that had 31,000 miles on it with a list price of $40,999. And that truck was in Warrington, Virginia. So in having conversation with a council member or two, I think some of the concern expressed relates to process, that absent an urgent need for the vehicle, that perhaps the council would prefer to deal with equipment purchases through the normal budget process. Revisiting used versus new, I would suggest, or convey to the council, that it's our experience that especially when dealing with construction equipment, buying new from state contract offers the best value, and that while we have had some success in the past, buying used vehicles, that tends to be more for passenger vehicle type and office type uses. But we can certainly proceed in a number of ways. I would recommend that if council prefers to stick with a budget process, I think we can postpone the purchase of this item until we get through the FY19 budget process and make it part of the authorized budget. If council's comfortable proceeding, I would respectfully reassert my recommendation that we buy off the state contract. But happy to proceed. You direct.
I'd offer that we have, appreciate you taking the time to educate us on the process. I think moving forward, you know, we did, purchased a lot of vehicles in this last budget session, several hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles, and so I think that was one of the things that sort of prompted at least my question for it. I would offer that we, and make a recommendation that we appropriate the $40,000 out of the Stormwater Fund retained earnings for the new vehicle.
So that's the motion. I think it was introduced back November the 14th.
Yes, sir.
You're good with that?
Yes.
All right, if there's any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries for row.
Thank you.
Item six A is to receive a presentation from Lynn Pullan, President of the Center for Cold Water Restoration regarding the center's five-year strategic plan. Mr. Hitchens?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the last several years, economic development staff has been working with the Center for Cold Waters Restoration, CCR for short, which is a volunteer nonprofit organization led by scientists, educators, and business professionals. CCR works as a think tank of sorts, focusing on the next generation of sustainable natural resource economic development initiatives to provide high paying or high investment cap, high innovative capital investment, and high paying employment. Tonight, the president of the board, Lynn Pullan, is here to update council on CCR's accomplishments, goals, and strategies. Mr. Pullan?
I think I've got this thing, let's see if I can figure out how to get this to wake up on me.
I was going to say, it was a nice presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, I want to thank you for having the opportunity to address you tonight. I believe you've already got a copy of the strategic plan, so what I wanted to do tonight is kind of cover the highlights of what it is we're trying to accomplish and why, essentially. Before I get started, though, I want to mention that I've got several board members in attendance here tonight, Gary Pelletier, Dr. Tom Benzinger, Jenna Gonizer, Dr. Maggie Van Heus, and Greg Hitchens also sits on our board. There's several that couldn't make it tonight. Center for Cold Waters Restoration was formed in 2008. It was an initiative from WDDI. Since then, we've become our own 501(c)(3) organization and have been focused on, you know, several initiatives that you're aware of. All right, let's see if I can get this thing to work. Maybe I'm doing the wrong thing here. There we go. Okay. So I want to just cover briefly our economic development, our economic story here in the city of Waynesboro. The whole premise of the Center for Cold Waters Restoration is that Waynesboro's economic story is really centered on water. We'll talk about that a little bit. So the Center for Cold Waters Restoration vision is to be a catalyst for the implementation of natural resource-based economic development that will substantially accelerate and sustain the Waynesboro economy for generations to come. That's our vision. That's what we are doing, and that's what we intend to do. We, the way that we will fulfill that vision is articulated in detail in that strategic plan, and I'm not going to go through the details, I'll let you read that, but I do want to talk about the overall aspects of what we're trying to accomplish. Why is Waynesboro the best location for this type of effort? Why did the CCR get formed in Waynesboro? And why do we believe this is the place for this to be? And then what have been our accomplishments to date? So the premise is that, you know, the abundance of water in Waynesboro and the Shenandoah Valley was the stimulus for the community's agricultural roots and led to the industrial success beginning in the 1700s and with the tourism industry and the tourism activity. You know, initially, we had farms, orchards here that kind of grew around that water resource. In the 1800s, people would travel to Waynesboro for summer vacations where they would take the springs and they would, you know, spend time in the clean air. There was an abundance of tourism homes here in the city of Waynesboro, and it was all attracted by the springs and the natural resources and the natural beauty of the area. Excuse me. Later on, especially in the early 1900s, major corporations were drawn to Waynesboro to take advantage of those water resources. It's no mystery that DuPont located here because of Baker Springs. We know that. It's no mystery that Crompton located here because of Baker Springs, and you can go on and on. What's interesting is, is in the early 1900s, that textile industry was innovative and entrepreneurial and was high-tech. They were manufacturing synthetic fibers, and at that time, that was a new thing. They did it right here in Waynesboro because of that abundance of water, natural resources. We believe that natural resource economic development will play a major key role in our future, and we see that the initiatives of the CCR is becoming the foundation for what will be the next industrial revolution in the city. We just ended 100 years of strong industrial base. We see a future here tied to the same natural resources. It will create a rebirth for us. So just kind of retracing the history, early in the settlement of the city, the city was settled around the river. It was Teesville's. In the 18th century, that water resource drove the agricultural industries. In the 20th century, it drove the manufacturing industries, and in the 21st century, the South River is driving a tourism industry now. And we know that. Our whole city's, you know, mantra is natural resources, you know, the greenway and that sort of thing. The next 100 years, water will reinvent Waynesboro's industries. So what's the reason why water is going to do that? Everybody says it's just water. We in the United States, and particularly in this community, are really kind of lucky. We've got such abundant resources, we don't even think twice about water. That's not the case around the world. And so a lot of people say, "Well, what is it? I mean, water's free. Why would I buy bottled water, right? It's one of the biggest industries out there. Whoever would have thought of that?" But there is predictions that say that while oil and petroleum was the liquid of the last 100 years, water will be the liquid of the next 100 years. Wars will be fought over distribution of water. We've done some research on the whole issue of water scarcity, the whole, you know, what's driving this industry. Water scarcity is both a natural and human-made phenomenon. There's enough fresh water existing, and it's a finite number, right? You can't make extra water. It cycles. There's enough water in the world to support a population of 7 billion people. The last record I saw, which is about eight, nine months old, said that the estimate is about, the world's at about 5.5 billion, but it's growing fairly rapidly. Some other people that think that it's actually a little bit more than 5.5 million. The problem with water is it's not distributed equally. We've got an abundance of water in North America, Canada, but you go to this Middle East, you go to areas of South America, places like that around the world, they don't have that water there. What's happening now with bottled water is it's the largest natural resource transfer from one continent to the next in the mystery of mankind. If you think about all the bottled water being sold overseas, we're moving it out of our watershed and distributing it in the Middle East and other places like that. The other thing that was interesting is, I read a study that said that our municipalities, our infrastructure, water management infrastructures across North America are in really a state of disrepair. A lot of them are over 50 years old. The estimate is that 37% of the natural water, fresh water that gets produced in a local community's water system is lost due to breakage in the pipes, seepage in the pipes, things like that. So there's a lot of effort right now in developing technologies that will help cities and municipalities manage that and recover some of that water resource that's being, that's being lost. And then, of course, pollution is a major issue as well. The UN University Institute for Water Environmental Health said that to reverse that trend's going to take about 840 billion, or 1.8 trillion over 20 years to reverse that trend. But there's a $3 trillion economic benefit to that. That's going to drive this water technology industry. Water is going to become more of an issue. There's going to be a lot of money chasing it. We're in a situation that we can really benefit from that. 70% of the world's water is used in agriculture, and it's one of the most inefficient uses because you're basically just spreading it out in large quantities. But when you consider that Waynesboro is in the heart of a major agricultural area, this is a great incubator or a great prototyping area for companies that develop technologies to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of irrigation technology, where they can go right into the field and address that technology with real farmers and real applications. Because of that, we firmly believe that Waynesboro is positioned to capitalize on this global water challenge. We're in a perfect, perfect spot for that. And that's what the Center for Cold Water Restoration is aimed to do. When you look at our strategic plan, and admittedly, it's a pretty difficult message to send. We've pitched this many times over the last nine years, and people walk away with the piece that they can really adapt to. If it's a trout hatchery they're talking about, they think about fishing. If it's the museum, they think about, you know, taking their children to the museum, that kind of thing. But there really is a strategy behind this whole concept. Each of the initiatives that we, whoops, what did I do? Oh, I should probably let that go. If you look at the very top line, you know, communication, education drives sustainable development. We've got several initiatives that are more short-term oriented. Championing a trout grow-up facility has the benefit of allowing us to grow fish to put into the river, but also has a great opportunity to develop an agriculture, agriculture industry here in this community. The museum, that was an initiative that we linked the city with several years ago. I personally sit on the foundation board. I'm doing it again. I don't know what I'm doing.
It's not you, Lynn.
Might be my little point. I should probably put that in my pocket. I think that has something to do with it. Tom Benzinger here sits on the Board of Trustees and is the vice chair of the museum down in Martinsville, so, you know, we've been involved in this for a while, and we believe very heavily in the potential for that. Innovation, we've been looking at technology incubators. We've already spoken with several universities and colleges. We've met with the Shenandoah, or the Virginia Institution for Higher Learning. Actually, Mr. Hamp attended a meeting that we met with the director, and they're very interested in partnering with us to bring the universities together with commercial enterprises to create an opportunity to develop the next century's technologies right here. So that's more towards the long term. When you get into those kind of initiatives, we get into the more opportu- When you get into those kind of initiatives, we get into the more opportunities to bring new industry here, new startup businesses. That creates high-paying jobs. And again, it's a more sustained thing. Right now, we're in the communication and awareness phase of that. And, you know, as you know, we've been, you know, hoping or working hard to get the museum to center their branch here and we're not giving up on it despite the several setbacks that we've had with the state funding. So that's our overall model. That's what we intend to do. We see momentum as we move through this model. Each one of these things independently has a specific and addresses a specific need, but collectively drives the capacity that allows this community to create a new industry. Not unlike DuPont did. I keep going back to our heritage. When DuPont showed up on these shores, the shores of the South River, that is, we didn't expect that industry to blossom like it did. And look at the industries that came out of that. I mean, DuPont was a major player here, but so wasn't Poly Bonds, so wasn't Wayne Tech, so wasn't several other industries that located nearby. So we know this can drive that kind of opportunity. So why is Waynesboro the spot? Well, we feel and we believe that we can leverage Waynesboro's strengths. It's the perfect opportunity for Waynesboro because it's in our basic DNA to accomplish what we're talking about. We have abundant water sources within the city limits, within the city borders. Baker Springs is a tremendous water, spring resource and there's several other ones as well. And there's some nearby. Great water resources available to us. We're central to the transportation network. Let's just say somebody opens up a commercial aquaculture operation and starts selling commercially farm-raised trout or salmon or whatnot, they can truck it very easily up the road. That museum is a perfect location. When we did the feasibility study for that, the kind of numbers that we initially saw were pretty darn good considering it's I-64, I-81 and the Shenandoah Park, Blue Ridge Parkway, Skyline Drive. We actually tampered down the number because it looked a little too high and we wanted to make sure that we could make this a sustainable opportunity. We have a long and deep agriculture heritage and infrastructure. People around here get that, the agricultural piece of this. It's just natural to us. It's what we've, it's what we are over, you know, multiple generations. There's a strong logistics, trucking and warehousing backbone here. So it wouldn't be a big stretch to be able to create the capacity if you're moving product like, you know, agriculture through that network. And we're within 100 miles of key universities. We've talked to UVA, we've talked to William &amp; Mary, Dr. Benzinger's on staff, he's a professor at JMU. We've got another professor that's on our board, also in the biology area, that's a professor at JMU. We've talked to Virginia Tech, we've talked to William &amp; Mary and they're all very interested in being a part of this effort here. So what have we accomplished to date? We've developed a community awareness centered around that river. You know, 20 years ago, when I first got involved in some of this stuff downtown, if we asked the council to fund putting a conduit or covering over the river in a pipe and then covering it over with a parking lot, we would have gotten the money to do it, I think. People didn't see that river as a true asset, but rather a liability. We've changed that way of thinking. A lot of it had to do with this organization. We've built a demonstration center. I know some of the council here is new. I don't know that you've been across the street. If you haven't, we should bring you over there, take you through it. It's a mini living, three-dimensional brochure. We've got a fish tank in there. We've got exhibits from the museum. We've got our whole story laid out. And we wanted to bring that into a three-dimensional environment so that people could come in and kind of grasp what we're talking about. It's a lot easier to understand it when you see it than trying to read it and understand it. So that's an open invitation. Anytime you want to go, I'd love to host you there. In fact, we should probably just schedule it. We've raised privately more than $68,000 to leverage 128. We leveraged several funds to raise money for the demonstration. It was a $50,000 fund. We raised money for the two studies that led to the museum, the feasibility study and the market analysis. So we have the capacity to get out and bring money into the, into the community for these kinds of initiatives. We attracted the partnership between the museum and the city and we're right there with you guys and we'll do whatever you need us to do to try to make this thing happen for this community. We've now formed a 501(c)(3) so we can receive tax-deductible donations directly to the organization. And we're now raising funds and have already raised some funds to fund distance learning sessions that the museum holds. So it's a live classroom broadcasted from the museum, hosted by one of their scientists. They have a catalog that addresses SOL teaching requirements from K through 12. There's course numbers and all that. They send in a onsite representative from the museum. You bring it up to the screen, one of their scientists is in the museum and they go through an SOL training. It's about an hour and a half program. And we, we're actually going to be starting to ask for partnerships or partners to continue to fund this program. And Mrs. Conizur is a retired chemistry teacher from the high school and she's working with the school system now to line up some teachers and hopefully we can get enough room. There we go. Sorry. I don't know what it is. It must be my magnetic personality. And we've got, we've got a website, we've got a mailing list, you know, we've got a way to communicate with the community as well. So, Center for Cold Water Restoration, we're working to create a vibrant Waynesboro-based economy by building on our community's many natural, many strengths and abundant cold water resources. And I am done. Good luck to my father, the person behind me on this one.
Does anybody have any questions for Lenny? You know, I'd just like to say, Len, that, you know, all the work you've done for the last nine years or whatever, in supportive of that and supportive of the museum that we're trying to get and all the board people that have set on this project with you, we really appreciate all the work that you've done for downtown and for Waynesboro.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is to receive a presentation regarding engineering solutions for traffic management at the intersection of 13th Street and Roster Avenue. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think you're well aware of the situation at 13th and Roster, that some months ago, we were required to remove the signal lights at that intersection because of deterioration of the wooden utility poles upon which the lights were strung. And the method that you see in that lower picture of stringing lights on wire is one that's fairly antiquated at this point. So, at the direction of council, we've worked with the engineering group of McCormick-Taylor to identify various solutions, options for the intersection. And this evening, Mr. William Winston will be here to discuss those options. I'm going to spoil the end though and jump to conclusion and then we can work our way backwards. That as the city staff sees it, there are really three viable solutions to managing traffic in the intersection. One solution would be to simply leave the intersection as it sits today. The stop signs that were installed basically meets engineered standards for safety and could be left in place. We wouldn't suggest that you do that. I think there are warrants for some sort of a managed intersection here. And I think in the long run, we would be, it would behoove us to intervene in some way. Another solution would be to reinstall a signal light and we compare that solution to installing a roundabout. They have a fairly equivalent cost at original installation, but a roundabout tends to be less expensive if we choose to have pedestrian facilities in the roundabout, which I would think we would because of the close proximity to Westwood Elementary School and the nearby neighborhoods. And two, that a roundabout is less expensive to maintain over time than would be a signalized intersection. Broadly speaking, roundabouts, modern roundabouts have been installed for the last couple of decades and they are different than old traffic circles. If you've ever been in DC and been in the DuPont Circle, for instance, that is a traffic circle and it's different in that in a traffic circle, traffic merges and a roundabout, people yield to traffic already in the roundabout as they approach. And roundabouts have a tighter radius so that traffic moves more slowly in a roundabout. Over the period of time that there have been studies conducted, roundabouts have proven to be far more safe than signalized intersections primarily because there are less conflict points for drivers in the intersection and traffic moves at a slower speed. And so there are certain types of accidents that are the most dangerous in terms of property damage and injury and then in a roundabout than occur at a typical signalized intersection. Roundabouts are more efficient in their ability to move traffic. They're, as I noted, less expensive to maintain. There's improved fuel efficiency in the operation of a roundabout because there isn't the stopping and idling and then restarting that occurs at a signalized intersection. And they can be created in a way that they're more aesthetically pleasing. The great challenge that we sometimes face with roundabouts is the public perception that the public often is skeptical that either they or their fellow travelers won't be able to figure out how to navigate a roundabout. And it's not uncommon that when roundabouts are proposed, that there is some resistance in that regard. And so oftentimes, communities will undertake some sort of a public information campaign, for instance, to, to try to educate the public both in terms of the operation and the efficacy of installing a roundabout. So, as it stands today, it has become policy of the Virginia Department of Transportation, for instance, that if roundabouts are studied in comparison to traditional signalized intersection, a roundabout would be the preferred method of managing traffic. The city staff would agree with that assessment. Now that I've ruined Mr. Winston's presentation, I'm going to turn it over to him so that he may be able to walk us through how we get to that particular conclusion. And hopefully, it's both educational for the council, certainly the staff and the general public who's interested in listening. Mr. Winston?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you very much, Mr. Shaw, for the introduction there. Thank you very much again for allowing me to present to you regarding this intersection. Just to kind of go backwards a little bit, it's been some time since we spoke last. As Mr. Shaw mentioned, the signalized intersection did have to come down due to some structural deficiencies. At that time, we needed to determine some kind of solution. So what we did was we collected traffic data out there for 12 hours. We performed a signal warrant analysis to say, "Do we actually need a signal here?" And the warrant analysis said that we do. We then actually went through an analysis of different alternatives to see exactly, you know, how we needed to operate this intersection in the interim while the signal is down. So we looked at the existing signal configuration. At the time, was signalized, it operated at a level of service B. And just to remind you, a level of service goes from a grade A through F. A being the best, F being the worst. So this operated very well with the signal. We looked at all-way stop control because generally according to the manual and uniform traffic control devices, if you're thinking about installing a signal, if you're working kind of backwards from this, you generally would put up an all-way stop control signs here. However, you can see that the level of service is E, so it did not function very well. And that was just due to the volume of traffic. So we looked at the two-way stop control that is out there today and we get a level of service C. Part of the issue with this is that some of the movements, some of the individual movements fail during periods of the day. And that's why we looked at signalization in the long term and why it's warranted in that way. As I said, in the short-term recommendation, we did the two-way stop control where we put stop signs on Crompton and 13th Street there. You can see the stop signs and some of the signs that we recommended to be installed. From there, we had to look at some of our long-term alternatives. What is it that we wanted to do in the future since this intersection should be signalized in some fashion? So we said we could maintain the two-way stop control as it is now, but as we said, a level of service, you know, can be a little tricky at times for certain movements. We could look to reconstruct the traffic signal in what we would call a standard configuration where we would have separate mast arms for each movement. However, the issue is on that northern corner there, we've got quite a few utilities in the way. Trying to get the signals in there would require some significant relocations, some right-of-way issues, things of that nature. We looked at a single mast arm. You know, that was one of the older alternatives. We looked at one giant mast arm to handle all movements of traffic, all directions. And then as we discussed, we looked at what we would call a mini roundabout, something that's small, that fits somewhat within the confines of the intersection as it is today. So that's where we ended. Our next steps were to actually do the survey and various other steps and that's where we are today. So we actually had a physical survey done of the intersection to see what our physical constraints were. And then we looked at the feasibility of what we can and can't do, the cost alternatives, and then we came to a recommendation. So when looking at our operations in the long term, our two-way stop controls, we said was a level of service C. If we put the signal back, that would bring us back to a level of service B, so it would operate well. A roundabout would also work at a level of service B. So they're pretty much equivalent between a signal and a roundabout. They function pretty well together. This is our proposed drawing of what a single mast arm signalized intersection would look like. We did not feel that a traditional four mast arm setup would work simply because of those utility constraints that we discussed before. So we looked at one mast arm. You can see that it's about 75 feet long. This pole would be actually very large diameter-wise to handle all the signals and signs and emergency vehicle preemption that would be required, that normally would be spread about through various mast arms. We're just going to have it on one. And you can see that it's on the corner where the cemetery is now. Part of, part of what we were trying to do was avoid any kind of right-of-way taking and any movement of sidewalk or curb, anything like that as much as possible with this scenario. So what we did was the city owns the cemetery, so we said to avoid right-of-way costs and things like that in nature, we put it on that corner. So basically, you would just have one pole and a signal cabinet and then we would tie into the power that's right there. So you can see it's very minimal in what we're doing and it operates fine. We then looked at a mini roundabout configuration and this is the alternative that we came up with. You can see that it's mostly within the, mostly within the confines of the current intersection. You can see that the leg off of 13th has kind of shifted a little bit and that's on the cemetery side. And the reason for that is because the intersection is not exactly at 90 degrees. There's a bit of a skew in there. And so to try to get that movement to line up as best we could, we would need to move over onto the cemetery side a little bit. As you can see, we would try to, you need to keep the roundabout as large as you can while maintaining within the intersection itself. And that's just to make sure that part of the issues with a roundabout is you want to make sure that people can't just fly through them. You want to offer some skew, some offset to try to get people to slow down as much as possible to increase the safety here. So then we looked at our costs. Okay, physically, can we do it? Yes, we can. We can either do a signal or a roundabout. So let's look at our costs. We've broken this up in a few different ways. What you'll notice is that on each category, there's also a line for pedestrian accommodations. Neither of the two options that I showed you had specific pedestrian accommodations such as a signal. There was no pedestrian heads or push buttons or additional sidewalk or anything like that. It was just to get the intersection operational again. The roundabout was the same, same situation. It had breaks in the splitter islands, but no specific crosswalks, no additional sidewalk or anything like that. However, when we looked at costs, we wanted to make sure that if you all decided that that's something that was extremely important to you, that you wanted to do, you know, here's the cost breakdown of what, of what that would take. So you can see that construction costs for a roundabout and a signal, pretty much the same. And the reason for that is that one signal pole is very large and very heavy. The steel gets extremely thick, the pole gets extremely large in its diameter. Pedestrian accommodations, you can see that, you know, for a roundabout, it's not much more. You're looking at some sidewalk, some additional striping, but once you get into the signal, you have to have... But once you get into the signal, you have to have some additional pedestal poles, some additional push buttons, things of that nature, more conduit. Preliminary engineering costs, you can see for a roundabout is a bit higher, and that's just because you're doing a more fuller roadway design with something like this. You've got cross-sections, you've got profiles and things of that nature. Whereas a signal, it's a bit simpler. So you can see that between the roundabout and the signal, it's a little higher in the engineering costs. Right-of-way and utilities. As I said before, you know, our goal was to stay off of any private right-of-way, any private property like that. We stayed on the cemetery side as much as we could. So in the examples that I showed you before in our two designs, there was no right-of-way utility costs at all. However, if we need to do some pedestrian accommodations because of where everything fits and lies, we would need to get some additional right-of-way to get those sidewalks and pedestal poles put in. So when you look at the grand total, you can see that the roundabout and the signal, pretty much the same. Roundabout slightly less, signal's just a hair more. As Mr. Shaw stated, part of the VDOT recommendation is if a roundabout is feasible, then that is the recommended alternative. So from VDOT's perspective, a roundabout is what we should be doing here. So when you look at the actual recommendations, VDOT, we at McCormick-Taylor, public work staff in conjunction with each other, believe that the roundabout is the preferred alternative. It was something that we would recommend. This is based on right-of-way. Can we fit it within what we need to do without disturbing any private property? Yes, we can. Environmental factors, you know, as was stated before, that there is less congestion, less start-up and stop from vehicles, therefore, less emissions. The design constraints, can we get those worked out? Absolutely, we can. Safety. As Mr. Shaw stated, we, with a roundabout, you greatly reduce the number of conflict points. We go down from 32 conflict points. That's the spots where a vehicle-to-vehicle or vehicle-pedestrian interaction could cause a crash. We go from 32 at a traditional intersection down to eight with a roundabout. So you significantly reduce the chances of having a crash. The severity of crashes greatly reduces because of the speeds going in and out of a roundabout. You're a lot slower than you would be in a free-flow movement. One of the things we also looked at was crash history. There's only three crashes within the last five years at this location. However, the potential for very deadly crashes is very real at a standard signalized intersection. With a roundabout, you can reduce the potential for a fatal accident by 90%. You can also reduce your injury crashes by about 76%, and that's a factor of the speeds going in and out again. The severity of crashes is also greatly reduced because of the type. Because you're coming in at a skew with each other, you're not having those angle crashes like you would before. You're not having those head-on crashes like you could. Part of the other costs that we look at is operational costs. So, you know, to give it some real dollars, what I would call operations and maintenance costs, this is real cash money that you can actually see. The traffic signal will cost about $5,200 a year to maintain. That's with re-timing, that's with signal maintenance, that's with lighting, that's with power. A roundabout, you're looking at about $750 a year. So you're looking at a real savings of about $4,500 a year between a signal and a roundabout. If you look at a 20-year lifecycle, the traffic signal will cost you about $77,000 over 20 years, around about $10,000. You're looking at a $60,000 to $70,000 savings over the 20-year lifespan. If you take safety and delay into consideration, this is what I call perceived dollars. These are anticipated things. And this comes from the VDOT intersection comparison analysis table that they use. You're looking at, for safety, you're looking at a cost of $190,000 annually for a traffic signal and $67,000 annually for a roundabout. That takes into consideration potential crashes, other operations, and things like So those, you know, those are our operation and lifecycle costs. So that kind of leads us to how we would recommend a roundabout for this location.
Any questions?
I would like to know how would a roundabout fit with our preemption lights that we now have?
There's no, there's no preemption that goes into a roundabout. What would happen is if a fire engine or an ambulance was coming up, the standard procedure for vehicles is to move to the side. Now, when you look at how they would function, you know, how they would actually get through that intersection, the center island itself, and let me back up so that we can take a look at it together. That center island itself is completely brick or concrete or stamped concrete or however you would like to do something like that, and that fire engine and/or ambulance can actually drive over that center island and get through.
So cars would have a way to get out of the way?
Yes.
So the roundabout can handle large vehicles, trucks?
It can. Generally, when you see a roundabout, it's usually got a truck apron. So it's got this, around the center island, you know, sometimes you see grass, and you see a brick or concrete, what they call an apron around it. This entire circle is brick or concrete, and that allows the heavy vehicles actually drive on top.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, I would just ask, you know, so we receive a presentation this evening, and are we looking to, are you looking for any guidance, Mr. Hamp, or?
That's what we're looking forward to, see if we want to proceed with the recommendations that we've received from the engineering plus from staff, or we've got to make a decision. We can't just keep talking it to death.
I would just offer that, I mean, you know, we certainly had a lot of folks that have come out from the neighborhoods to speak to it. I think we owe it to particularly the folks that live in and around the vicinity of the intersection to be, I think, the right thing to do, to have, you know, a small, little public information meeting to sort of reiterate for those that couldn't be here tonight, and it's a courtesy to them to let them know sort of, I know, I'm supportive of the roundabout for obvious reasons. And largely because of what you said, they're safer, it's cheaper, longer lifecycle, so on and so forth. So, and I also use the intersection nearly every day, so I would just offer that.
So we had a very preliminary conversation with the Director of Public Works, and I think you communicated perhaps with McCormick-Taylor today that we have some interest in that informational-type meeting, managing expectations, so this is not a session in which constituents or residents of the area get to vote on what solution we select. This is a meeting at which we communicate about the solution that council presumably will furnish direction to staff to pursue. But yeah, I think we can make that happen, if that's what you have in mind.
The analogy I gave to my wife the other day was that if a traffic doctor came in and said that tells the patient that this is the thing that we need, then that certainly, I think, odes well for the decision. But again, I think it's a courtesy and it's a fairness to those that live around there. We owe it to them to at least provide an opportunity to inform them of how it would work, what it would look like, right-of-way impacts, and kind of explain it the way you did tonight.
I agree. Does the rest of council agree with that also?
Yes.
All right, let's proceed with that, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item six is to receive a presentation from the city manager regarding city council compensation and group health benefits. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, my assignment was to consider the present configuration of compensation for our elected officials, the city council, with a particular eye towards equity among members. Council members receive monetary compensation. Presently, the mayor receives $6,120, and non-mayor members of council receive $5,100 annually in monetary compensation. In addition to that, elected officials are afforded access to our group health plan, though they're not obligated to take our group health plan. And members who do elect to participate enjoy a contribution, an employer contribution, that the city makes on behalf of the respective member of $6,699. So for a member of council who elects to participate in our group health plan, their annual compensation runs about $11,799. It's slightly more than that for the mayor. If you have a council member who does not elect to participate in the group health plan, they simply enjoy the benefit of the monetary compensation. If it's not the mayor, that's $5,100. So you end up with this sort of nearly $6,000 discrepancy among members of council and their relative compensation. So the Code of Virginia specifies the maximum amount by population of the locality for which the elected officials serve. For Waynesboro, the maximum compensation for the mayor would be $13,000 annually, and for a non-mayor member of council, a regular member of council, if you will, $12,000 annually. So if we, as a matter of equity, contemplated eliminating eligibility for the group health plan and converted the dollars that would have been otherwise applied to that premium contribution to monetary compensation, sort of a cost-neutral option for the council to consider would be monetary compensation on the order of about $10,120 for the mayor and about $9,100 annually for regular members of council. And that, in doing that, if you adopted such a model, you would certainly achieve the element of equity that presently doesn't exist, and you would actually save the organization about $100 under the current configuration of council members and their electives, and potentially an additional $13,000 or so in an environment in which each member of council elected to take the plan through their service on council. Pointing out also that by eliminating the eligibility to participate in our group health plan, you would eliminate the claims experience that council members bring to the plan, which is of notable consideration in a self-insured environment in which we currently operate. So essentially, my report to council is that you could, within the Code of Virginia, increase your pay to a $10,120 for the mayor, $9,100 for other members of council. That would be under the maximum allowed by the Code of Virginia. You would be saving the organization money, both in just pure compensation outlay and in claims experience. And further, you would be creating a compensation and model for Waynesboro's council that is more consistent and more on par with other elected bodies in the region. I know I gave you a lot of information in a hurry there. I'm happy to slow down and respond to questions that you may have.
Bottom line with me would be, it's not going to be an increase to the taxpayers of the city of Waynesboro. At anything, it'd be a savings if we just do the minimum of the amounts you just give us.
Correct.
And if the savings, and that's just on either what we're paid or what we get paid and what we pay for our cost of our health insurance. So there's no increase to the taxpayers. Plus, if we go and look at the part where the claim side of it is, somewhere I'd heard a number of somewhere around $30,000 a year savings, possibly, to the city if we go with this plan.
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
The main thing I want the citizens to understand is this is not us taking money away from our city, it's putting money back into it, so just to be very clear with that. And it would equal out compensation across the board to everybody serving.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any?
And when I hear equitable, savings is always good, but I wonder about, there's, if I'm working full-time, my position on council does not allow me to do anything for the citizens during the day. So if you're talking about equitable, I don't know how much that's worth. But if I have a full-time position, I can't attend openings and things that the city representatives are expected, so to speak, even though we don't ever have a time clock to check in. But our availability to the citizens is very important. So if someone calls me and I'm at work, I have to call the city manager at work to get him. So it takes that, him away from his job, where if I can come in during the day and talk to the citizen or the city manager, that's available to me. So when we're talking about equity, I think, we'll see. If it's about saving money, I'm always for that. But I want to think about equity, how it affects everything.
And the only thing I would respond to that, Mr. Freeman, is city council is not a full-time job. I think you can make it a full-time job. There's enough phone calls and emails and conversations and ribbon cuttings and Christmas dinners and luncheons, and that you could spend 40 hours a week if you had that much time to do. But normally, we're set up that we meet after hours, simply because we can get staff in here, and we give the people that work during the daytime opportunity to be able to come to the meetings at night. There's some of our work sessions we've done during the daytime, just because I think it's, once again, we've saved money getting staff in and getting some other people that have daytime jobs to be able to come here to that. And I haven't really seen where we've missed a lot of council members at these meetings. I mean, there's always the exception, and we short a council member here tonight because he's out of state. So, but I agree with you. It's a lot easier with my time and being retired, that I have more free time in the daytime, I can meet with people. I don't have to rely on getting off from work or taking some time away from work, my comp time, vacation time. So, and I know our members do that. Our members do use their private time to sometimes get away from the job. At least, that's what I think is happening, and I've been told by council members that it does. So it's a two-way street, and I know, when I look at it, I just always try to think about overall what's good and for the best of our community and for the cost. So, Elzina, you got something to add to this?
I think you covered it.
Okay, Mr. Short, do you have anything?
Well, I think you covered it too. I mean, I often half-joke about, you know, don't tell my wife how many vacation days I've taken. But, you know, it's part of the desire to try to better your community and do good things for the community. So I think that, I appreciate the conversation, and again, and an opportunity to, again, not only create equity, reduce cost on day one, but also moving forward, you know, as health costs continue to increase, and you're seeing a 2.5% to 3.2% increase annually in health costs, that goes by the wayside. You don't see that additional cost anymore. So I would support it. And again, it wouldn't be effective until July 1 of next year, I believe.
So that's correct. If the council confirms the recommendation to move forward in this manner, you'll be presented with an ordinance at your December 11 meeting, and then final consideration adoption of that ordinance at the first regular meeting in January. There's some code provisions around the adoption of changes to elected bodies' compensation related to general election that will need to factor into our process. But that'll be, you'll see the matter at the next two regular meetings.
And I appreciate, you know, by code, we could make the amount that we're compensated even higher, which would then be, right off the bat, a... even higher, which would then be, right off the bat, a bigger cost to the community. And your recommendation was not that. So I appreciate that trying, you know, we always look for our city employees to do the best job they can at the cheapest way they can do it or try to save money. And I think, you know, and we should lead by example. So thank you. And we'll move forward with that and bring it up at our next meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Item 7, cancellation of December 26 council meeting. Mr. Hamp?
So the calendar would have, the city will observe the Christmas holiday on Monday. I'm a little flustered here, sir. I think Christmas falls on the 25th this year, and therefore, we have, sir...
Really?
Boy, I'm really, so, Christmas is on the 25th this year, and the 25th is on Sunday. So we'll observe the...
It's Monday.
Is it really?
Monday.
Yeah, you're doing pretty good.
Can I call timeout and do a do-over here? So Monday is the 25th, is what you're telling me?
Correct.
So the staff report is correct. So Monday is the 25th.
Really?
The staff would recommend that you cancel the second regularly scheduled business meeting for December in observance of the holiday.
Now, thinking the past, my nine-and-a-half years on council, we've seen that usually, I think, maybe always, the second meeting has been canceled and a lot of people are taking extra vacation time. So a lot of times when we're going to be doing a meeting, we'd have to be bringing people back in from vacation or not have the full staff that we need here. So we found that it was probably better off just not to waste our time at night, right?
Yes, sir. Well said.
And everybody else's, does anybody else have a comment on that?
That's fine.
All right.
So that's proposed, to make that change by resolution, if you could...
So is our motion to adopt that resolution, counseling the 26th?
Some...
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is our second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 4-0. Item 8A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating an anonymous donation in the amount of $1,000 to the school nutrition funds for, to be used for student meals. Mr. Hamp?
This is an anonymous donation.
Are there any questions of Mr. Hamp? Is our motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, whoever you are.
Mr. Short, yes. I know that the kids will thank him.
Yep.
Item 8B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Title IV Part A Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant in the amount of $27,636 to the school funds for the support, staff stipends, and staff development. Mr. Hamp?
So Mayor Allen, members of council, each of the appropriation ordinances this evening related to the schools are either passed through state, federal money, or grant funds. And so I don't think it's necessary for me to comment on each one.
Any questions? Is our motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 8C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating Title VI flow-through grant funding in the amount of $2,731 to the school funds for materials and supplies purchases. Once again, any questions of Mr. Hamp? If not, is our motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 8D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating Title VI preschool mini grant funding in the amount of $865 to the school funds for materials and supplies purchases. Once again, is there any questions of Mr. Hamp? If not, motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item 10 is to consider an appointment of an individual to the Historical Commission with a term ending August 31, 2021. Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Kelly Shealy presents her name or interest in candidacy to the Historical Commission, and her appointment is presented for your consideration. If she's appointed, she would fill an unexpired four-year term ending August 31 of 2021.
Thank you. Is our motion to appoint Ms. Shealy to the Historical Commission?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is our second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 4-0. Item 11, communications and correspondence.
None from me this evening, sir.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 12 is citizens' comment period.
Mr. James Wiley.
Mr. Wiley, if you'll give us your name and address, please, and observe the timer over here.
Absolutely.
Once it gets to red, if you're not done, please wind it up. Thank you.
My name's James Wiley. I live on 925 Washington Avenue in Waynesboro. As I'm sure everyone in here is aware, on November 14, 2017, residents of Waynesboro were shocked to discover flyers on their vehicles encouraging recruitment to the Ku Klux Klan. The flyer claimed that the hate group known as the KKK was a Christian group that wanted to let white residents know that they wouldn't be, quote, "alone anymore," end quote. This statement is ridiculous because of Waynesboro alone, the Caucasian population is roughly 16,942 to roughly 2,118 African-Americans. I'm not here to debate the validity of the flyers, however. I'm here to demand that the council take a stand against the hate and let the KKK know that hate is not welcome in our city. As Carolyn Dole, Mayor of Stanton, said, "I believe, I speak for the vast majority of Stantonians when I say I hate is not welcome here. Let's continue our progress together and uphold our city as a friendly place where every citizen can live freely and thrive." As of today, the city of Waynesboro has not issued a statement about the horrible flyers. We will not allow hate to have a home in our city. And we want our city representatives to stand with us in denouncing this activity and letting these people know that their hate isn't welcome here. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. And I will say that we did take a stand at one of our council meetings. Ms. Anderson led the charge, and she was supported by the rest of council totally about our non-support to these type of groups. So we've made our statement clear. So, next, Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Kay Trigilio.
If you'll give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Kay Trigilio, and I live at 921 Bridge Avenue here in Waynesboro. Mr. Mayor, City Council, and city staff, thank you for hearing me. I am spurred up here also by the flyers from the KKK. One of them was placed on the car of the pastor of my church's wife, who is a person of color. She was undoubtedly horrified to find that on her car. That's what spurred me to look at our city ordinances. Section 50-6 of the city ordinance says, "No person shall affix, distribute, or place any handbill, poster, or advertisement on any private automobile or private property in such a manner that they may become detached or blown about the street." In other words, it's nothing more than a littering ordinance. You've got to make sure it's attached and stays attached. And that doesn't protect your citizens from having their private property touched. Freedom of speech doesn't go to touching my private property. If you go further in your city ordinances, 66-9 says that no person shall sweep or throw into the streets, among many other things, handbills. So my pastor's wife is put in a position where not only does she have this horrible hate-printed material in her hand, but she has to take it home or find some responsible place to dispose of it. You know, her first reaction was to drop it, but then she picked it up and took it with her, so we would see it. But again, the citizens are now not only accosted with this hate material, but they're held responsible for disposing of it properly. So we would suggest or ask that you give us an ordinance that protects our private property from handbills. People should not be able to attach handbills to my private property. They can stand on the street, they can stand in the parking lot, say what they want to say, but they shouldn't be able to attach their handbills to our private property. And that's what I'm asking you to look into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Paul... Reverend Paul Oakley.
You'll give your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Paul Oakley. I live at 1085 Jefferson Avenue. I am the minister of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Waynesboro. Our fellowship was formed in 1955 and has met on Pine Avenue and the tree streets since 1965. And our denomination reaches back to before the Revolutionary War. We had members who were among the framers and early presidents of our republic. This community and our country is our home. When the Ku Klux Klan placed their recruitment flyers on windshields here in Waynesboro, the leaders and residents alike were faced with a choice concerning whether and how to respond to the Klan's message of hate and white supremacy. The Ku Klux Klan is the oldest American hate group. Black Americans have always been the Klan's primary target. The Klan has also attacked Jews, immigrants, gays, and lesbians, and until quite recently, the Klan also attacked Catholics. While the Klan have self-identified as Christian, the teachings of love of God and humanity that are generally central to Christianity are sadly lacking from the expressions of the Klan. In their recruitment flyers, they slander the civil rights activists of the Black Lives Matter movement, falsely claiming that they are killing white people and killing police. They perpetuate the lie that people of color who died unarmed in the streets were thugs who got what they deserved. And this is a white supremacist lie intentionally aimed at adding to tensions and hatred in the community. There is no excuse for such a lie. A call to, the numbers supplied on the recruitment flyers reached a highly anti-Semitic message, and the anti-Semitism was integral to the cancerous white supremacism of Nazism, that we expended great national resources to defeat on the battlefield in World War II, but anti-Semitism is still alive, something that remains something to struggle against. Now, the Supreme Court has consistently ruled that hate groups have the right to freely express their beliefs and values, no matter how scurrilous. But their right to express their hatred is not where the law ends. Furthermore, we have a moral and ethical obligation to fight their desire to promote white supremacy. We must oppose their stated desire to enact what is essentially ethnic cleansing. The city of Waynesboro has limited legal remedies, but the city council and you, Mr. Mayor, have a responsibility on an ongoing basis to speak out on behalf of all citizens against hate groups. So I ask you, please, to speak out for the worth and dignity of people in this community who are made, in the image of God, people that the KKK would denigrate and harm. Please do what is right and speak out in a way that the entire community hears and knows about. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Ms. Jonelle Childress.
You'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jonelle Childress. I'm at 210 Parker Heights Road. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to address also the KKK flyers that showed up on the, just around the corner here two weeks ago. And what I have found out in the last three months is that there are 912 hate groups currently active in the U.S. that did not exist nine years ago. In the last year, we've had a lot of churches, religious meeting buildings, bombings of synagogues, mosques, a lot of racial unrest and violence, as we've seen local, in our local area, 25 miles from here in Charlottesville. The political rhetoric has been divisive, and if it were only words, you know, it might be reason to maybe not, you know, get involved. But now, we've seen words come to action, and we've seen it in our local area. We live in Waynesboro, but I bet you there's not one person in this room who has not been to Charlottesville for shopping, for concerts, for sporting events. We all love our sports teams that play over there. We send our kids over there for, you know, activities, for concerts, even schooling, for some of us. And as a long-term, longtime resident of Waynesboro, I also know that, you know, we can't act like this doesn't involve us. It does. And those things are going to spread across to all the smaller places close to Charlottesville. And when I go places now, and, you know, people are always ask you where Waynesboro is because it's a small town, and if you say, oh, it's near Charlottesville, you see the reaction that you get from that. People understand, they've seen what's happened. We've made it to the national news because of the things that are going on, the hatred that's spreading, and it's spreading to our area. Not to say that it wasn't already here, not to say that we don't know, you know, the people who put these flyers out on the cars may have been, you know, the local people who are in the KKK. It's entirely possible. But I will tell you that since then, I've learned about many groups that I didn't know existed before this. I didn't know who the Proud Boys were. I didn't know what the alt-right actually meant. I didn't know what, let's see, there were about five different groups that I wasn't aware of that, you know, were part of the groups that were meeting in Charlottesville and actually ended up killing Heather Heyer. We don't need that here in Waynesboro. And I applaud you all for having a meeting about it and talking about it in council chambers. I think that's awesome. But in order for you to make us citizens feel like we're safe in our city, we need you to get out there and not be afraid to, you know, approach this on social media, to, you know, get out and speak to the papers. And, you know, I'm not trying to make a comparison with Carolyn Dole, but she did say some things that I think made the citizens of Stanton feel a little bit more like they were supported by their city. And, you know, she's been quoted, but, you know, she said she believes she speaks for the vast majority of Stantonians, and I think that's all of us in this area when we say that. Hate is not welcome here. We would like, as citizens, for you all to, you know, not be afraid to say that. Think about your constituents of color. Think about your constituents of Jewish heritage or religion. Think about the people who would be marginalized by these groups and, you know, try to look at, from their perspective, we need you to, you know, to stand up for us. We need you to help be part of our voice. And I also wanted to point out something, too, that I found out in the wake of things that were going on in Charlottesville, and this is from personal experience, unfortunately, that a lot of these neo-Nazis and hatred groups came to Waynesboro as their staging area. They've used our parks, they've come to meet at our Walmart stores, they used our hotels. I was at Sheetz on August 12, and I saw a bunch of them come into Sheetz, and I'm there with my young son, and I had to run back into my car until all of them left. They were all dressed in some of the same clothing I'd seen earlier in the day on the news in Charlottesville. So, you know, we are part of this, whether we'd like to be or not, so we need to, you know, have you guys stand up and make a statement, please. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Anita Bellamy.
Your name and address, please.
Yes, Anita Bellamy, 100 Guilford Lane. I'm here also to address the issue of the, actually, I'm here to address the incident in Charlottesville and the one where the KKK flyers were distributed on people's cars on November 14. I want to start off by asking why? Why have all of you been silent? What is your agenda for our communities in Waynesboro? And are you a city council representing all of the city or just the majority of the city and not the minority? Your silence is saying a lot to the people in this area when you sit there in your elected seats and ignore what's happening in our region and in our communities. It shows your community how you really feel. Ignoring these issues do not make them go away. We are not going to allow the KKK to march in our city ever again. In this town, they were allowed to meet in Corner Spring Park, which brings it very close in here to our city. So someone should have been out there talking. Someone should have been addressing the news media, should have been addressing the newspapers. Someone should have been out saying something. And by y'all being silent, it shows the minorities in this community that you're out of touch. You're out of touch with us. You're out of touch with what we stand for. Being here and having to address this Waynesboro City Council in 2017, like my grandmother had to come before the city council and address you in 1980 about the same issue, is ridiculous. and address you in 1980 about the same issue, is ridiculous. This should not be happening in our town. We should not allow this to happen in our town. And someone needs to tell the KKK, the neo-Nazis, that it's not going to happen in our town. What we do need to, I mean, I'm asking, what do we need to do to change, to make changes in our community so these issues can be addressed, so it can be stopped, so we can finally silence them? Because they're here. Regardless if we like it or not, they're here. But we need you to also be here. Be here for the entire community, not just some of us, but all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Linda Rivas, 1112 Esteline Valley Road in Craigsville. However, my interest in being here tonight is because I work in Waynesboro. And I, like the preceding people who spoke so eloquently, was concerned about the KKK pamphlets that were left on cars. Being a resident of Craigsville for over 20 years now, I can tell you that the rumors that you hear about the KKK being alive and well in that part of our county are true. We need the governing boards from the cities of Waynesboro and Stanton, as well as the Augusta County folks, to all get on board and work together and say, no more. It's not accepted anywhere. Right now, it's being overlooked. In my area of the county, it is. When the KKK distributed these pamphlets, it's being overlooked. I was surprised to hear that the city council had taken a stand, and I'm glad you did. But like one of the previous speakers said, it's important to be out front and out loud and have a media presence about it. One of the things that you might think about, you had a gentleman speaking about the water and how this was going to be, tourism was going to be big for Waynesboro. If you get painted with the same brush that Charlottesville has been painted, tourists aren't going to want to come here. And you've got to, you just have to stand up. I understand that KKK and alt-right have the right to meet. But also, you representing the citizens of Waynesboro have an obligation to speak up for what you think is right. And I would ask you to question yourself. By not speaking out loud about it, are you complicit? I don't know the answer to that question. It's not easy. I think we're facing things that have been swept under the rug for many, many generations. And we're all negotiating a minefield at this point. And I have a lot more answers than I have questions, and I'm sure you do, too. But I know that, for me personally, I have had a wake-up call. I'm out there now doing what I think is right to make my community better. And I urge you to look in your hearts and do what's right for your community here in Waynesboro, to make it a place where tourists will want to come, to make it a nice, welcoming place where I'll want to keep coming back here and working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chanda McGuffin?
You'll give us your name and address, please.
Chanda McGuffin, 644 Edwardian Lane here in Waynesboro. I just want to thank you for a few minutes to talk. I wanted to thank Mr. Hamp and Ms. Anderson for participating with our community meetings that I have started having after August 12 and some activities. I wanted to thank them because their presence does not go unnoticed at those meetings. It's very important that when we start to think about community, we start thinking about unifying the community. And so I believe that that starts with conversations. And so we've had different people from different walks of life, with different backgrounds, different cultures, to come together and have those conversations, tough conversations about racism and discrimination and people not recognizing different cultures and religions. And so we've brought together all these people. And even though we're doing that, we're still faced with what happened a couple weeks ago in our city. And I know that it may not bother anybody else, but it disturbed some of us, a lot of us, that that's the same propaganda that was left here in our city was the exact same propaganda that infiltrated Charlottesville. I worked there. I got it on my car. It was almost the exact same propaganda. So what that tells me is we're a target. We're on the mark. And us ignoring it, because I wrote a letter to the editor in September encouraging Bruce Allen, Mayor Allen, to stand in solidarity with Charlottesville as Stanton mayor had done, as Harrisburg's mayor had done, and it was ignored. You can meet privately all you want, but until the masses hear your voice and they know what your stance is, it doesn't matter. Not enough of city residents come to city council meetings to hear any of that. And it makes me wonder, if Ms. Anderson wasn't on city council, would we have made the stance? Would you all have even had that conversation? And so as a resident of Waynesboro, I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe for my son. I don't feel safe in this community. Can you imagine getting that on your car, and you were African-American, and you have to turn around and wonder, are they still around here? Are they still standing around here? Is somebody going to take my life? This is serious. And so we have a fear that we're no longer safe. And elected officials are silent. And your silence speaks volumes.
Ms. Nancy Berg?
You'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Nancy Berg, 141 Huntington Place, Waynesboro. I wrote out a few things to try to say tonight, but after listening to all the people talking, we're all saying a lot of the same things. There's fear. There's anger. There's a desire to understand that this community needs to speak in a loud voice altogether. And I think we're looking to you as our council to be able to project that voice. I was very happy to hear that, I mean, I've been trying to go to council meetings. I'm sure most of you recognize me for having shown up when maybe I'm one of three people here. And I'm not saying anything, I'm just listening, because that's what I want to do. I want to listen to people and hear what their issues are. Now we've got a big issue here. And we've got to find a way, all of us together, all of this group and with you as our leaders of this community, to make our voice heard all over the community. It's, you know, I learned to know what's going on, you have to be there. You have to show up. You have to go, come to council meetings. You can't, I can't wait for a phone call from one of you saying, okay, well, we talked about this at the meeting today. You're not going to do that to every citizen. We all have to be here for each other. But we really are dependent on you to help make our voice be heard throughout the community. And I don't know how to do that. But you, you guys have some influence in this community. You have influence over the newspaper. You know, you can try to make our voices heard, that we can all speak together as one, saying, this is not acceptable in this community. It's for the future of Waynesboro. We've been working for the last year in the comprehensive plan. How are you going to get businesses, millennials, to come into this community and want to have, open a business, want to have a successful business here if they see a community that, you know, is not sticking up for each other? So I guess that's what I have to say. Please help us with our voice to make the rest of the state know what we stand for here.
Thank you. All right. Number 13 is our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Then we are adjourned. Thank you.